Good morning. This is the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, February 6th, 2024. My name is Sean Flowerday. I am the Chair of Lancaster County Board. With me is Vice Chair Rick Vess and Commissioners Roma Amundson and Matt Schulthe. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please begin.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Item 1 is the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on January 30th, 2024.
Move approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest.
I'm staying.
Amundson.
Yes.
Schulthe.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries three zero with one exception. Item 2 is the claims. 2A, approval of the claims processed through February 6th, 2024.
Move approval of the claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Schulthe.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item 2B, approval of the claims, including billing for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period provided in Nebraska statute 23-135, Aramark Services Incorporated dated February 5th, 2024, for a total of $7,130.30.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulthe.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item 3 is a special presentation, the Commissioner's Award of Excellence for December 2023 to Jessica Seymour, County Attorney in the category of productivity. Jessica Seymour, Office Systems Specialist with the County Attorney's Office, has been selected as the Commissioner's Award of Excellence winner for December 2023. Seymour has worked for Lancaster County for 16 years. She was nominated by Nicole Ringer in the product of Productivity. In her nomination, Ringer states, "Our office is completing a case management system upgrade initiated in January 2023, reaching its peak in July." Jessica played a pivotal role in the transition swiftly collaborating with relevant individuals to organize alpha testers, division teams, and staffing for inclusive input and clear communication on impending changes. Jessica's proactive approach, including documentation and OneNote development, proved invaluable during collaboration with Justice Works. She dedicated extensive hours to reviewing workflow processes, addressing concerns, and ensuring updated documents and clear communication upon the system's go-live. As the project progressed, concerns from Justice Works led them to rely on our office's organization and communication to keep the project on track. Jessica's continuous testing, follow-through on assigned tasks, and prompt responses were crucial. In daily meetings, she remained well-informed, facilitating efficient discussions and prioritization. Without her, the project would have faced prolonged timelines. Our case management system untouched for 13 years posed unique challenges with retired staff familiar with the original setup. Jessica's commitment to understanding past processes, studying original documents, and seeking best practices from other departments ensured a successful system evolution. She consistently upheld the broader office goal, displaying a keen understanding of the big picture. Stepping into a significant role, she navigated the upgrade with a resolute attitude emphasizing our office's successful transition over building a new system, showcasing her dedication and expertise. For these reasons, we are pleased to award Seymour with the Commissioner's Award of Excellence for the month of December 2023.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Pat Condon, Lancaster County Attorney. This is Jessica Seymour. Jessica is here today for the award by the Commissioners, and again, greatly appreciate that. Jessica's been in the office for 16 years. I'm not going to go over everything that was in the nomination process, but I think, you know, it is, this has been a, she's been in the office for 16 years. We haven't had an upgrade for 13 years. When we were looking at doing an upgrade or starting over again, it was about $100,000. We figured to do the upgrade probably close to a million to start over again. So, this was definitely the way to go. You heard all the things that she did. That was on top of her other duties. I mean, she also managed, or she has two felony attorneys that she assists with getting ready for trials, getting witnesses lined up, things of that nature. At trials, we can get rather demanding, so, but she was able to juggle both those, wear both those hats, and she did a great job at doing that. It was interesting, as one of the things you saw in there, Justice Works started having some issues with one of their case managers out there in Arizona?
Utah.
Utah. So, they started having trouble with one of the ones out in Utah, and they basically turned over the daily meetings to Jessica and said, "Okay, tell us what we need to be doing here." So, they really relied on her, and as we do, we really rely on her, and I really appreciate everything that she has done. I think we have one of the best case management systems in the country. I think that's in large part due to the work that Jessica does in that and keeping that thing, that case management system up and running. It makes our jobs easier. We've in the past have now come to where we're e-filing with just a push of the button. That makes things easier. Cases, if certain cases are charged, letters are automatically generated, so the attorneys can sign those letters for witnesses and victims. It just makes our job as prosecutors much easier, and it makes the County Attorney's Office much more efficient, and I really appreciate that. And I've hinted to Jessica that the next project, and again, the board and I have talked about this, is the data dashboard. This program and the upgrades that we've made will just really make it very easy to do the data dashboard, and I think will make what we have available to the county commissioners and other members of our community, our criminal justice community, and will really make things more transparent for everybody. So, with that, again, Jessica, thank you for everything you've done on this project. I mean, she was here on weekends. I mean, one, the weekend it went live, she was here both Saturday and Sunday, pretty much the whole day. So, she's gone above and beyond her regular duties, and I really do think she very much deserves this recognition.
I'm presenting this to you on behalf of the Commissioners. We recognize the great work that you did to help keep in the County Attorney's Office move forward, and we just really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a couple things?
Sure. I wasn't really prepared for that. I just thank you guys for the recognition. This is awesome. I love working in the county attorneys. I love working for Pat. He's a great boss, and somebody told me the other day, "You're probably only the, one of the only people I know that really likes going to work." So, I take that as a compliment. So, I love my job, and I appreciate this. Thank you so much. Item 4 is the consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of 4A, amendments to the following county contracts. C-23-0018 with Civic Plus for county website design, logo design, and hosting services. Item 4A2, a C-24-0045 with office interiors and design for systems furniture for the county sheriff's office. Item 4B, right-of-way contract with Larry R. Hartman, South 120th Street and Stagecoach Road, in the amount of $2,080. Item 4C, utility permit 2497, allowing Unite Private Networks to install a new fiber optic line. Item 4D, change order 1 to the county contract C-23-0552 with Pavers Incorporated for a plan revision and additional working days. Item 4E, setting a public hearing on Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the county city building regarding an appeal on resolution PC-018976, special permit 23042 for an approximately 239-foot-tall lattice tower for wireless facilities to address inadequate coverage in this area for Verizon Wireless. Item 4F, received and placed on file the following reports for January 2024, Clerk of the District Court and Assessor Register of Deeds.
Move approval of the consent items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Schulthe.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item 5 is the public hearing for an appeal on resolution PC-01896 for special permit 23048 for the West Pioneer Cedar View Community Unit Plan.
I will now open the public hearing for special permit 23048.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group.
And then I'll sign you in before you start.
Oh, yes.
Just raise your right hand. That's right. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth? If so, answer "I do."
I do. Thank you. So used to counsel and don't get in front of you guys very often. But I like that you do that. So, yes, appearing today on behalf of Home Town Handyman Inc., an applicant here, this is a standard AG CUP where we cluster the density of one unit per 20 acres onto one part of a parcel in three-plus-acre lots, put in a road, and it is the preferred way to do things in that it preserves the rest of the remaining land for open space. And so, this is a consent item on the planning commission and was so therefore approved in his full staff report. And Mr. Rick Hill, I think, didn't understand the consent process and came up at the end of the meeting and wanted to testify on it. And then staff explained, you know, that that was on consent. Those items were passed, and so he has since appealed it to you all. So interested to hear his appeal, and I'll save any remaining comments for rebuttal.
Do we have anything from staff? Is Mr. Hill here?
How much time do I have?
There's technically not a limit right now.
Yeah, we don't usually limit it. How much time do you need?
Maybe 10 minutes.
And then I'm going to go ahead and swear you in. And then go ahead and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth? If so, answer "I do."
So help me God. I couldn't hear everything that the gentleman just said before me, but I think he said he's making a request for one lot per 20 acres. Is that what I heard? Or not? You don't remember?
In a public hearing, this is, this is really your time to speak to us. It's not usually a dialogue.
Well, I don't think that's what I heard. I want to go back to the Civil Design Group's letter of January 8th, 2024, in which in the last paragraph of that letter says this clustering bonus, this CUP would permit five dwelling units on 76 acres. There's not 76 acres out there. The closer number is actually 73.26. And then it also says in that same paragraph, there's a groundwater report that's included with this, and I don't see where that groundwater report is. It was supposed to be sent to an individual over at the city health, the county health department. And that name, individual is Chris Schroeder, I believe. Might be wrong about that. And then I'd like to go to the county board summary report. That's dated January 22nd of this year. On paragraph 3, once again, it says this is a plan for 75.58 acres. That has to be corrected to 73.26, and numbers matter here. This has already, I guess, gone through the planning commission, which I was not allowed to speak at. I have videotape of that, if you'd like to see proof of that evidence. In paragraph 4, same page, "The preservation of open space and clustering of lots meets the goals of development in the agriculture area of the county." Well, that's sort of like saying communism's a cool way to run a society. You know, it's a play on words. It does not meet the comprehensive plan of 2050 for the city of Lincoln, North Lancaster County. Paragraph 5, "The planning commission voted 6-0 to adopt resolution here to approve this permit." That was without my testimony, and I believe my testimony was not allowed, which is unconstitutional in every book that I understand our government to operate with. I was silenced. Okay, moving on to page 1 of the Lincoln-Lancaster Planning Commission's staff report. The first paragraph up there, 75.58 acres, needs to be adjusted down to 73.26. The next paragraph for justification for recommendation is, it says, quote, "The proposal meets the intent of the rural cluster subdivision under ag zoning." No, it doesn't. And to sort of give if an overhead projector could be... The property in question is right there at the end of my pen. Okay? Now, in order for this property to go into residential low density, it needed to be yellow according to the comprehensive plan for Lincoln-Lancaster County for the 2050 comprehensive report. It's not.
Can I just ask you a question real quick? I'm a little confused. Are you not wanting this to go through?
I'm in 100% opposition to what I believe was a falsified report to get community development, a residential entity out in an area it has no business going into. Okay? Did that answer your question now?
Yes, that does. I appreciate that.
So, under justification for recommendation, I believe the planning commission used incorrect verbiage there. It should have said, "No way, Jose." The compatibility with the comprehensive plan is "no way, Jose." We can't allow this. And the key quotes from the 2050 comprehensive plan, using this same figure from your own website and planning commission, says, "You can't do this," okay? Because it does not fit. And then on the next page 2 of the report, "The rural environment, rural areas should be preserved for agriculture." Yeah, I believe that. Okay? That's what it says. I'll hang with that. But then the next statement, "A limited low supply of low-density residential?" Not even allowed according to your own comprehensive report here. So, you got to remove that. Acknowledge the fundamental right to farm in agricultural districts. I have people behind me here that know, they've been, they've been looking at this land off their porch for 40 years. It's hayland. Guess what livestock needs? Hay. Okay, then on the goals section, well, we need to cross out both those paragraphs entirely because none of this is for country people. It's not for the farming community. You know, this is development that's just absurd. The elements section of page 2 needs to be deleted in its entirety. The policy sections, it says, "Allow for acreage development in appropriate areas of Lancaster County." We got appropriate areas of Lancaster County. There's one that just north of, well, actually, there's two, well, three north of Denton. They're huge. The one at 80th and West Van Dorn going south is larger than Pleasantale, Denton, and Emerald combined, and it doesn't have a city name on it, and how that thing got passed, I have no, no clue. Okay, I do agree with the continued agricultural uses in that same paragraph. Then we're going to move on to page 3 of that report, the analysis. Paragraph number 1, "The 75.58 acres needs to be reduced to 73.26." Paragraph 2, it says, "Allow 3.79 units, which should be 3.66." Numbers matter, people. And then it says this CUP qualifies for a 25% bonus. There's no bonus for lying people. I don't care what the rules and regulations are. When you file a fraudulent permit, the whole thing needs to be thrown out. Okay? Because the people behind it are unethical, and you can't trust them. Now, the planning commission should have reviewed all these numbers, which they did not, obviously. They just took the numbers and regurgitated them. Okay, moving down to paragraph 3. "The reason for this entire statement is the developer is hoping to purchase the property to the east of this request to allow this zoning action." Now, I know the owner of the property east of this location. It would be on his deathbed, he would sell this property for development. The man's a farmer. He loves his agriculture. He loves his agriculture community, and he'll fight to the death to keep it that way. Okay, there's a sentence in here that says, "To allow for future subdivision connectivity to the east." That's the reason for this turnabout that wants to go into a street heading straight east to this other property, because he already has future developments of planning, low-density residential in this area that's not allowed by your comprehensive report. Okay, paragraph five, it says, "Seven registered wells," and I hope you have this copy before you, that you're following along with me, because if you're not, you're going to get lost. He says, "There are seven registered wells that are within the vicinity of this proposed CUP." There's 32. There's 32, not seven. Now, why the planning commission didn't figure this one out, I have no clue either. Okay. This here is a plat map. Okay. Now, this little area right here is what they're talking about. Now, even if you're looking at this darn picture, you know that there's more than seven wells around there. But, see, there's a Seward County right here. Now, the planning commission did not send out the letter to anybody in Seward County. I wonder why? Because, see, this, this property is like 150 feet away from Seward County. Now, I'm going to show you what happens when we bring in Seward County. Every one of these little dots is somebody's house. Okay? These people right here live right here. Okay? It's a beautiful, two-story white farmhouse that looks immediately over this property for 40 years. Okay? The guy that owns this section immediately to the east here lives right here. He's the guy that said, "On my deathbed," when I saw him. 32 wells, not seven. Okay. Now, the health department, it says at the very bottom of this paragraph five, it says, "The health department waived the test well requirement based on the water analysis submitted." Where's that water analysis? Have you seen it? I haven't. Now, I'd like to see that report, and I would like to make a comment here that this property right here, I own. Okay? Craig Ray is a renter. Now, we bought this back in 1999, and our well water has gotten to the point where we have to distill our drinking and cooking water because of pollutants in it that cannot be taken out. Okay? We already have an $8,000 water treatment system. It's not going to get any better. Okay. Number six here, it says paved roads. There's no paved roads out anywhere on this map. This Denton Road is a paved road down here, but that is not servicing this property. Okay? I'm reading off your own comprehensive plan that these guys or somebody put together. Okay, number B, adequate water quality and quantity.
Well, Mr. Hill, that's, that's 12 minutes. I'm going to ask that you try to make your way to your closing.
Okay. We're going down to E. There's not two parcels. There's seven to the west. Okay, the three parcels is incorrect. There's eight. Okay, that, that's to the north. And then they did not really respond to anything to the south or north. But there's five parcels. There's 25 parcels within this area. Okay? So, on the page four, they have the printed, the printed numbers here are what the applicant put down. There was no houses to the north. Actually, there's eight within a half mile. To the south, there's two houses within a half mile. They put none. And then to the east, they put three houses. There's actually six. And then to the west, they had two houses, which is true within a quarter mile. But when you go to a half mile, there's seven. Okay? So, that's where it covers what I wanted to get going, with the exception of page five of this future street to the east. There won't be a street, please. There won't be a development out here either. In 11.11, 1.11, it says, "Change to temporary turnaround." It needs to be a permanent turnaround, because there's no street going to the east from this location. Okay, and then I gotta jump into, I would like to have a 25, I'd like this commission to have a 25-year moratorium on this applicant ever trying to process this land into a residential area, just due to his failure to be honest and truthful before the planning commission and now you guys. And Chris Schroeder, I guess, is the Lancaster Health guy. And the final thing I would like to submit before you today is the people. Because that's who you're here to serve. Okay, on this $10 bill, can you show the image?
It's coming up.
Okay. I'm going to give you a these are the people. Okay? They're not all my friends, but they're my neighbors. Okay? Some of them that are good close friends. They moved out there for a reason.
Thank you.
We're not city people. There's a huge difference between people that want to live in the city and the country people. We got guns. We know how to use them. And we'll defend this country to the death due to our right that's written in the Constitution. Because when our government becomes dictators to us and rules over us, and they don't listen to the people, you need to be removed from office. Okay? There's, I believe, did you count how many names were on that? I think I got it written down here somewhere. Give me a second to get there.
Mr. Hill, we're at 15 minutes. I'm going to
Okay, well.
give you 30 more seconds here to finish up.
Okay. Okay, can we display that, please? I would like to have the commission, the board, to put the county on the hook for paying for people's water wells that are going to go dry. You can get a bond, and we got 68 names on there that, there's 47 properties that would like to have a guarantee from you if you do allow this criminal activity to happen out there. Because it's, it's not honest, it's not ethical, and the you got 47 properties listed on that document. Okay? And you have our, it says right here, I gotta read this, "The county board must furnish, must provide an insurance bond paid for, by the county to pay for as many new wells as required to furnish potable water to my home. If water from a new well is not up to health standards, you will be required to pay for all upgrades to bring it to drinking water."
Mr. Hill, we're going to, we're going to call it there. So, thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, either in, I guess, I guess we will first do, since this is a public hearing, we will first do proponent testimony for the application. This is for the application, not for the appeal. Is there anyone who would like to speak as a proponent on the application? There, okay, hearing done. Is there anyone who would like to speak in a neutral capacity on the application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application in favor of the appeal? And we don't, we don't time applicants, and we don't time usually the, the person who has filed the appeal. For public comment in a special hearing, we do, we will time it to five minutes.
My name is Susan. I live across the road.
And then I'm going to swear you in.
I'm sorry.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please answer, I do.
I do. My name is Susan. I live across the road from where the zoning action is going. I need to apologize. I'm not good at speaking in front of people. But I do have a plat map here that I wanted to show you. I don't know, maybe I put it in wrong. Kind of upside down here. This is the Lancaster County. Right here, the dark spot is Denton. This is Conestoga Lake. This is where the zoning action is that we're discussing here. This is Southwest 98th and Van Dorn. There's a housing development that just went in there recently within the last three to five years. There's at least 25, 27 houses in it. Over here is 84th and Van Dorn. That housing development has been there for quite a long time. But to the south of it, that is all new zoning. The roads are already in, and I assume that there's approximately 25 to 30 more houses that can go in there. This is across from Conestoga Lake. That housing development has been there within the last three to five years. There is more room for more houses in that development. A gentleman did buy, build a castle out there, and no one is buying them lots because of that eyesore, I guess. Rumor has it that he is in the process of building a swimming pool at that area, too. There went another well. This is right north of Denton. There is a new development within the last nine months. There's four houses in there. I think there's room for five more houses. People across the road there, when them four houses went in, they had the well guy out there three times because their well was sucking air and everything. So I can't imagine what five more houses are going to do. So I guess my point is, why do we need this one when there's so much room here from all these more houses and everything? So, and other than that, the rest of what I have, Rick, pretty much covered. The well issue, the traffic issue is a huge concern out there. It's all gravel. Right now, it's muddy because of the snow and everything. Quiet, lights, wildlife, all that's going to be gone with that zoning action there. And if I understand this right, on this zoning action, there's R1 and R2, and if, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think that's a resolution to add more houses. The only room to do that is in the creek way back behind where these five houses want to go. Just for the record, that creek drains into Conestoga Lake. So, with sewer systems and stuff like that, that might be a huge issue. But I thank you for my time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to testify against the application that's in favor of the appeal, but against the application? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing on special term. Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. Is anything final from staff? And then, and then you will get a rebuttal, sir. I apologize. Jumping ahead of myself.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please answer, I do.
I do. Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. If I could, I'll try to address some of the comments that were made about inaccuracies in the staff report. As I was following along, was just trying to, as much as I could, to write down what the issues were so we can address them. As far as we can tell, going by the assessor's records, the GIS records, the records of the surveys that were done with the final plats, this is approximately 75.58 acres. You could argue if it's 75.6 acres or whatever it would be, but being a significant amount off, no, we have no indication that our records are inaccurate. The information, and I think the applicant can talk more about the well information, but the well report, and it is available online, it's available through our website, which was submitted to the health department, was on seven wells. They didn't say that there was only seven wells. They were providing, I think, examples of well data. I'm not a registered water expert, and so that's why we, when we get these applications in the planning department, we route it to the health department, which is our experts. And I can assure you, while Chris Schroeder is not here today, they take that role very seriously. There are, have been applications where they have found that there was inadequate water, and/or they have required test wells to be done. But there is an option that allows for, if you provide existing well information, particularly in this case where there's going to be five more properties, that based on that information, the health department can determine if they think there's an issue or not. They did not identify any issue here. There's no guarantees in, in the world of, of water, as we all know. But based on the information available, they did not have any objections. They would not have hesitated in any regards if they did have any concern. And then just kind of the broader issue of the comprehensive plan. When areas are going to be zoned AGR, agricultural residential, when you're going to have the entire property taken up with acreage residential, so the entire 75 acres would be, let's say, divided into 20 lots. When you're filling up the entire property, yes, that needs to be shown as low-density residential designation or comprehensive plan. So, Mr. Hill was correct that if the property was going to be completely devoted to agricultural residential lots, three-acre lots, it should be shown as such in the comprehensive plan. But in this case, that is not what is proposed. What is proposed is an agricultural CUP. It retains the AGR zoning, and it retains 70% of the property is going to be in farm use. That is, the predominant use of the property is farming. In this case, the math works out that 52.9 acres must remain in agricultural use. And in just double checking the math that we had in there, that's exactly what they've shown, is that the outlot is going to be 52.9 acres. So the predominant land use is agricultural use. That will remain, and it'll have no density left on it. So it could not have any further houses on it. Now, the road does ask that it shows a temporary turnaround. At some point in the future, 10, 20, 30 years from now, if the zoning were changed on this and it was AGR, then you would want that road to be extended. So that road is there in case at some point in the future, there is additional acreage development. But at this time, there isn't, because with this application, the farmland to the south has no density left in it whatsoever. And so that's, also note, these are very typical of AGCUP developments that we have throughout the county, where rather than this property being subdivided, let's say, into four 20-acre lots, and you have four houses, that would still, quite often, when you have a 20-acre lot, often no farming occurs on the property. And so that's why the county and the city both have allowed this cluster, is so that you save a lot more of the farmland for farm use, and the people, rather, city people or people who are associated with sewer to wherever they live, whoever lives on the acreage lots can then have a much smaller lot rather than taking up a 20-acre lot. So, and looking back over the comprehensive plan and our testimony and our staff report, didn't see any errors in there. I do regret that we didn't make it clear at our hearing of the planning commission. It was read that this item was up for, on the consent, and if anyone wanted to talk about it, we would gladly have taken it off consent. about it, we would gladly have taken it off consent. No one raised any concern that they wanted to speak to it. There was a misunderstanding with Mr. Hill, and we let him know, absolutely, he had the appeal process for this. And so that's why it's before you today, so that he has his chance to address his concerns. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
I have a few, Steve, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So this, as you said, CUP's been established around for some time in our county as a way to preserve as much ag land in agricultural uses as possible, and yet still allow landowners to sell off part of their land to people who want to live on acreages in a rural setting.
Correct.
And that's what's being done here, following that process. So I just wanna confirm a few things that I think I heard from you.
Sure.
This would be five properties then in this CUP?
Correct. As was noted, that typically this would have otherwise been three, but there's a bonus that you gain by saving the land in agricultural use. And so that gave them the one extra, and the county allows the number to be rounded up. So when it was allowing 4.69, you get to round that up to five.
Okay, yeah, very good. That clarifies that. And so this area, the, the map that Mr. Hill showed, there's quite a few people living out in that area already. Five doesn't seem like a dramatic change in the population base in that area. I'm kind of assuming there, but...
Correct. And there's not a, we have some areas along West Denton Road where, again, you might have in an 80-acre property, 20 or 30 or 40 acreages. So it's to not to that scale, but certainly there are other houses. And then, and I will note, when we are putting in our analysis what's the existing land use, it's just a sampling. It's not meant to be an exact census, so I'm sorry if we said that nearby there's two houses and there's actually, if you go a little bit farther out, three houses. It was just mostly to try to point out, there are some other smaller acreage lots out in this area.
That was kind of where I was going with it. Actually, Steve, is, there's a lot of people living in this area already. I mean, if you look at all the houses that were referenced, we're adding five here to that.
Yes, and adding five is, is comparable with the area, and we have found that it's not the type of thing that also requires a, there are more cars coming, but it's not a significant increase in the amount of overall traffic from five houses.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just looking at the map, it's a little hard to see because there's not a map overlay that shows the five. Does the turnaround end at the creek, or is the turnaround before the creek giving space that eventually future houses could be placed out there?
I believe it ends before the creek, but Mike Ecker could verify that in terms of what would be the actual distance between time.
Okay.
I guess I had a question. There was conversation mentioned about Pioneer Boulevard being paved and it's not paved?
Our analysis goes into things point by point, and we have headings. And so one of the headings are, what is the status of paved roads?
Mm-hmm.
And so it says after the word paved roads, meaning are there paved roads here, it says, "This site is located adjacent to West Pioneers, which is Rock Surface Road."
Okay.
And so I, that's a heading, it's not meant to say that that's a paved road.
Okay.
It's a, it's a heading for the property.
I just really wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Because I think that that was a point that was made.
It is acknowledged as a, as a rock surface road. And I would note that this proposal is for private roadways, which is now the county standard.
And does that have to be paved, the private road?
In this particular circumstance, I think that could be addressed by Mike Ecker as to what they propose with this, because that is often an option that is allowed.
And this is under the new standards where the county will not be taking over any roads that are developed in this five?
Correct. As a private roadway, this would be maintained by an association of the five lot owners.
Okay, yeah.
Any further questions?
You've answered the questions I had. Thank you.
Okay, please.
I appreciate Steve going through some of the details on, on, on the math. And so I think Mr. Hill might be looking at what shows the size of the legal lot on the sectional plat map. Several years ago, the county attorney did rule that in calculating densities for AG and AGR CUPs, you can go to the center line of the road, which you typically owned to during that time, so that's a differentiation. However, whether it's 73 or 75, it still works out to five lots under the current regulations for an AG CUP and the way that it's calculated. So that's really irrelevant. I think Mr. Hill is also confused when he shows the comprehensive plan map that this area isn't deemed to be low-density. It is. I think he's confused by the colors. The entire county is allocated to be low-density ag residential. The next density level up is the AGR zoning, which is shown by the bright yellow areas on the comprehensive plan map. So that is an error in his assumptions and is completely false. And in terms of the wells, so, the well study, so what the county likes to see, the county Health Department, is to go and pick in a circular order around the site, at least five to 10 wells, if available, that would be a demonstration of the propensity of the aquifer in the area to be sustainable. And so what we do is we go in and we pull up all the registration logs, we see how deep the wells were drilled, we compare that to the actual topographic height of the land, because the DNR site will show you exactly where that well is at, and then we translate that down to say, okay, here's the aquifer level when these wells were drilled. They like us to see it, do them over a series of times, so not all wells that were just drilled two years ago. I think our study probably covered at least 20 years. I don't have it with me. And as Steve said, it's public information, it was part of our submittal package. If Chris Schroeder and the Health Department are concerned about it, then they would usually request the owner, our applicant, to go and drop a test well, to make sure there is some proof of water. In this case, the results were so significant, showing the resiliency and the high availability of groundwater, that he did not ask for that. And as you mentioned, Commissioner Vest, there are lots of people out here that have got a well and have obtained a well. We go through this a lot on AG and AGR CUPs, and when we get up to the northwest in the county, yes, it's much more difficult, but this area has a high propensity of water. The Health Department is 100% supportive of the study. Steve talked about the surrounding houses, that was, you know, when they do their summary, they look at the immediately adjacent properties. And so the other thing is the stub to the east, Steve and I have talked about this, we didn't show one, they want one to meet the block length requirement that is in code per county standards, and so that needs to happen. And so again, I guess I just wanna reiterate what I said at the very beginning, is that this has been the predominant method that has been in place for at least 30 years of clustering your one unit per 20-acre right, getting a bonus by clustering it, putting it on one area of the property, which is right up by the street. And I do wanna show, I'll show you two maps. I wish I don't have the aerial background on these, but in terms of the question about the drainage way, so here's the lot layout, here's the property, three lots on this side, two lots on this side. The other thing I can show you is our calculations for the culvert sizing, show that the road ends here, and right here is the, I will call it a drainage way, I don't believe it's a live creek. The drainage way is south of the lots, there's the temporary turnaround. Again, all that completely standard with the, over, my estimate would be 30 AG CUPs that I've done in my lifetime. And so with that note of my experience, I would also say that I am extremely offended by being called a liar and being fraudulent. So with that, I will close and answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
Thank you for being here, Mike, and appreciate you sharing your insights on this.
You're welcome.
Seeing no questions. All right. Now, we will go ahead and close the public hearing on special permit 23048, and move on to new business.
Item six, new business, 6A, resolution in the matter of special permit 23048 for the West Pioneer Cedar View Community Plan.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I appreciate the testimony that we heard this morning. We always value the concerns of people that are being impacted by developments in our community, and, but we also know that growth is a part of the reality of Lancaster County. After listening to the concerns and the explanations, and hearing that the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve this, I'm gonna move that we approve the resolution for special permit 23048.
I'll second that motion, and thank you, Rick, for that explanation, and that was very thorough.
And just checking with counsel, we're doing this correctly? We approve the resolution? We don't have to deny the appeal?
Yes.
Okay. Great. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Um, yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item 6B, appointment of Dan Nolte, Assessor Register of Deeds, to the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office Merit Commission for a term to conclude on January 1st, 2025.
Ben Houchen from the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. Yeah, Dan will be replacing Troy Hawk on the, since he has left. Dan has been on the Merit Commission in the past. As you know, right now, we are having some trying times on hiring people, and he can hit the ground running and being part of that, and he'll understand, and there'll be no teaching points. So we really support him and would like to see him beyond the Merit Commission.
Appreciate his willingness to serve. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yeah, I'm just gonna add one comment, and add what I first was reading the agenda, I'm going, Dan Nolte and the Sheriff's Department. It took me a minute to get that connection in there.
We'll hire her right now, you know, right?
Anyway, yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Item 6C, purchase and sale agreement with Realty Gift Fund Incorporated for real estate generally located at 220 South 17th Street and 1700 M Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508, Lancaster County, Nebraska, and legally described in the agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners, Karen Peterson, Director of Facilities and Property. We have the purchase agreement before you this morning. We are excited to get this part of the process completed, and then we can start our 60-day due diligence window, which is a little bit aggressive, and we're, we're ready to go. But this is for the property at 220 South 17th Street. The purchase price is $3,250,000. We are agreeing that within five business days after the execution of the documents that we deposit in an escrow account, $30,000 is, is a good faith. I know that we've talked about this, you know, several different times, but I'm certainly prepared to discuss anything about this agreement that you would like. Sarah Hoyle is here also, if you have any questions about what this property is going to be used for.
Let's put that on the record, shall we? Sarah?
Oh, sorry, Sarah, I called you out.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Director of Human Services for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County. And yeah, we are very excited with the purchase of this property. Thank you for your support of this project. Thank you to the seller, who I believe is here as well. But this is something that, in our community, we have needed. Several different assessments that we've had, families, youth, that we've done focus groups with, and different data sets that we've looked at have all pointed to the significant gap in our youth system of care. For the medical world, when our kids are suffering with broken bones, with strep throat, with a physical illness, there's a place for children to go. There's somewhere where parents can take their child on Saturday at 8 o'clock at night for mental health. That is not the same. When we have kids who are experiencing a behavioral health crisis and they don't meet that medical necessity, that they are hospitalized, but a parent, a caregiver, still needs somebody to help them, they still need somebody that they can see immediately to help stabilize that child, to get the family back home and our community, this is what this property will be used for. So again, we are very excited. We've looked at national models across the United States, the police department, our families have asked for a location that is central to Lincoln, that is easy to access on a bus route, and that is not too far from the police station. This property was perfect for that. Thank you.
Well, you did a long search for this?
No, go ahead. Go ahead, finish.
Okay. You did a long search for this, and it is really a perfect property, and so, and it will fill a very large gap, and we've noticed that for quite a while. So we're very excited about it also, but thank you for looking so diligently for it.
I was gonna say, this is something that you've identified and others for, for 10 year, over 10 years now. And I was going to comment that your smile was very, we couldn't wipe the big smile off your face when you were sitting in the audience, to bring this finally over to the finishing point here. But I also wanted to note that while we've been talking about that internally a lot and with a lot of stakeholders, I've been talking about it in the community a fair amount now, and, oh my gosh, the reaction that I'm getting is wonderful. People are so glad for this kind of an opportunity.
I guess I, first of all, in support of the program, just help me, remind me where the funds are coming from? It's a pretty significant amount of funds that coming from a general fund, where is, where is the money for the purchase coming?
This is going to be ARPA funding, is going to be using for this, used for this project has been set aside.
And then ARPA funding as well will be used to maintain the program that's started there, or where is the?
You can speak to programming, I can speak to the building.
Yeah.
Sure. This is a partnership with the Division of Behavioral Health. So for Medicaid reinvestment funds that we saw as a mix, when Medicaid expanded, they had a cost savings, this funding then will be allocated to the operation of that, to fund the behavioral health supports.
We showed up with the building, they showed up with the programming.
Gotcha.
It's, it's, works for everybody, and that was the goal of the ARPA funding, was to provide something that would have a long-term effect. And this is, fits so very well with that. You know, the goal that Sarah and other experts like her have brought before us is, don't let things deteriorate until they get into the legal system. Give people exit ramps long before that time, and that's the vision here. So, great work by Karen getting through this, and thank you to the individual who worked with us so much. We do express our appreciation to you, sir, that we can purchase this property and use it for the public good. So you have our appreciation as well, in addition to our money, so.
And I wanna thank too, Karen, I also wanna thank Candace, who has spent an endless amount of time working on the purchase agreement. Dave has sat through so many committees and has listened to me go on and on about the purpose of this and how we need it, and then all of you as well for your support of it. And obviously, this wouldn't be possible without Monty too, willing to work with us on this, so.
Well, I'd be okay with Monty. Did you have anything you wanted to add, sir?
So are we.
I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Item 6D, professional services agreements with the following entities to gather and examine criminal justice data affecting county jail population increases, and to identify potential solutions designed to reduce the number of incarcerated individuals in the Lancaster County Jail. HDR Architecture Incorporated, the cost of the county is $160,000. The Board of Regents of the University of Nebraska on behalf of the University of Nebraska at Omaha's Nebraska Center for Justice Research, the cost of the county is $124,945.
Well, this is something that we have spent a lot of time on as well. I guess, without going too far into the weeds, I think everyone's aware that the county jail is at or very close to capacity such that it's required... close to capacity such that it's requiring us to send some folks out of county, which is not a desirable outcome for anyone. So before we make any steps, we want to examine the choices and the responsibilities before us very carefully. So we've entered in, after a thorough investigation, we've entered into a contract with these agencies to explore what's causing the rising jail population, what alternatives are available to us and what they would look like if we implement them. So based on all that, I move approval of this item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call a roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item six E, agreement with Nebraska Wesleyan University for Lancaster County Community Corrections to provide unpaid internship opportunities to Nebraska Wesleyan University students.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Kilpatrick, Director of Community Corrections. You have before you an agreement that we've entered into with Wayland University. See this as a win-win opportunity, gets young people to learn more about what we're doing, plus they get to put out the word as to the good work that our department is doing.
I love interns and I love the opportunity to, to show them what, what's out there in the community and maybe shape their attitudes.
Right. So many, so many interns that are students, they're doing criminal justice and they think, well, I can be a lawyer or I can be a police officer. They don't realize there are so many other options available to them.
Tremendous program. Thank you. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call a roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item six F, lease agreements with Sober Houses of Nebraska LLC to secure temporary housing for adults transitioning from correctional settings. Each lease is for a two-year term for the following, thirteen twenty-seven B Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, two zero two six Washington Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, and two zero two eight Washington Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Again, good morning, Commissioners. These are for three houses that we're going to be renting beds for, are people that are coming out of jail settings into, they're in our programs until they can find a more suitable long-term housing arrangements. So many folks, when they come out of jail, have nowhere to go. So this gets them stabilized and back into the community as a stepping stone.
I think that this is really a vital step because when people come out of a correctional setting and they, they don't know where to go, they sometimes go back into the same environment that had been supportive of them, of the previously. So this is a great move. We appreciate that. I will move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call a roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item six G, contract with Van Dorn Valley Construction LLC to provide culvert maintenance 2024. The cost of the county is not to exceed eight hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This is phase one of our 2024 culvert maintenance. I have put an exhibit up on the overhead to show the locations in these pipes. There we go. I would just like to reiterate, of course, in Lancaster County, we have about sixty-nine hundred pipe culverts. We know about twenty percent of those are bad. So incrementally, we're just trying to get ahead of that a little bit so that we can reduce our unplanned road closures.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call a roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Carries five zero. Item seven, legislative update.
Okay, we got a couple of things to go over here. So there was an email that, yes, everyone has received it, from our lobbyist, Joe Cohot. There's some bills that he thinks we should be taking positions on. The first one is LB thirteen seventy-five that is up tomorrow in the Government, Military and Veterans Affairs Committee. Change powers and duties of county planning commissions and county boards related to conditional use permits and special exceptions. Joe recommends that we keep this in a monitor position. Haven't heard anything back yet from NACO on this. I know there's, it.
I thought we.
It came in later.
Came in later and it, he did recommend and oppose.
Yeah.
Came in just a few, an email previously.
I missed that. So then do we have a?
I would move that we oppose this particular bill.
I second that.
Can someone just tell me, what is this bill? I'm looking for the email. I'm sure it's here. I'm just, someone remind me what this is related to.
Fairly substantive. Let me pull this up. Hang with us all here.
All I gotta do it to. Essentially, it changes the powers and duties of county planning commissions and boards, provides conditional use permits, I believe. Yeah, maybe Dave?
Dave has some.
Commissioners, we discussed this a little bit on Thursday. There's two major substantive changes. One would be, the special use permits can no longer be made contingent on, on state or federal approvals. So one that's called out specifically here is related to water quality. So we have some special use permits that would require a certificate from DEE, for example, relating to water quality. That would not be allowed under this. The other requirement is there's a shot clock that would be instituted here. So you have ninety days from the submission of the permit. And if you have not taken action by then, the permit would go into effect.
Yeah, I don't like that. I could almost live with it if it wasn't for the, that we can't consider other entities certifications and input. Yep, so.
And just to clarify, his final recommendation was to oppose without testimony or letter.
None. Okay, so we have a motion to oppose. And a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call a roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
I'm gonna abstain as I wasn't here for the main discussion Thursday.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero with one abstention.
Next up is, is LB ten ninety-seven, which changes provisions relating to commitment of mentally incompetent defendants. Joe recommends that we take a position of opposition and we provide testimony. This hearing is on Thursday. This bill largely, my understanding is it guts LB nine twenty-one, which we passed.
Oh, no.
Just last session that we were so pleased with.
Yes.
It pretty much removes everything in it except for the payment. Is that right, Dave?
It reduces, it reduces the payment.
It reduces the payment too. Why wouldn't it?
Well, and with, with no upgrades over time. I mean, there was the CIP was engaged.
Right. Why wouldn't we just starve local governments more?
That's.
Uh, yeah, I, I think that I absolutely support taking a position, opposition on this.
I move that we oppose, uh, ten ninety-seven.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Who can testify?
Well, we'll figure that out after.
Cause we, yeah, it's a double header.
Yep.
Yes, it is.
There's no further discussion. Hearing none. Please call a roll.
Vest?
Uh, yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yeah.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And let's, let's do all these, then we can figure out who wants to testify. So and then same recommendation from Joe on LB ten sixty-seven, eliminate the inheritance tax, adopt the Prisoner Reimbursement Act, and change the authorized uses of certain county funds. Recommend oppose with testimony. I, I think we should oppose it. I think we should testify. I also think inheritance tax is just a loser for us. It's not that anybody likes it. It's that, it's that we just drop it into our general fund to offset high property taxes and we don't have another source. So I just, I feel like when we go into testimony, I think we should take a position of opposition on this. But we should also communicate.
We don't care.
Yeah, offset the.
We don't care.
Right, offset the.
That, I think.
Offset the funds and I think our opposition probably goes away, right?
Right.
It's, it's fine. Like, it's not, no one's philosophically married to the inheritance tax. It's just, it's just, we just, I mean, if, you know, I've run some quick nap, you know, back in the napkin numbers with, with Dennis before about the Prisoner Reimbursement Act. If that was coming in at the real cost of, of our, of what it actually takes to hold an inmate in our county jail for a day, we would, it would still be a cut, but it would be a much less substantial one. It probably would be something, you know, so I think, I think they're, I think they're starting that off at, I want to say it's thirty-five dollars and the real cost is like a hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Right.
You know, and it could be, there could be other mechanisms for it too. So, you know, I just think, I think when we go in, we should say, we should say, you know, we're opposed to this because we don't want any more pressure on property taxes. But at the same time, you know, it, it, find us another source.
It's not the inheritance tax specifically. It is a funding problem.
Right, right, right. It's the eight million dollar hole that will just end up being filled with property taxes and nobody wants that. So.
Yeah, I think the message needs to be very clear about where we're at on this. I, I do agree. I, I move that we oppose it with the caveat that our messaging will be specific on revenue replacement.
Right.
We don't believe either of the.
Yeah.
Portions of this bill adequately address that.
I agree. I agree with that.
Second that.
Yeah. I also think we should, well, let's take the motion, then we can talk. We have a motion and a second.
I'll just make a comment. I'm not gonna support this. I, I'm, I and the people that I hear from very regularly are in favor of repealing the inheritance tax. So personally, I'm not gonna support this action.
I think we're all in favor of repealing the inheritance tax. I think we don't want to offset it with property taxes.
Yeah.
Like, find me another solution, right? I mean, is there, is there another pot of money that I don't know about?
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you on the revenue side. I just am very, personally, and people I'm connected with are very supportive of us. I'm not.
I get it. I just, I, if our community has a problem, it's in taxation, it's property taxes first. So.
I just think our goal is to ask the senators to have an adult conversation about the consequences of their actions here. I mean, we, if this is the will of the public, we're not opposing it. But we have to live in reality about what it's going to do to funding county functions. That's, that's my goal.
Right, I agree. Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Please call a roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
No.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Okay.
And that'll be in front of revenue?
Yeah. So one, one of these is in front of revenue, one of these is in front of judiciary. Let's pull the, let's find out if we can send one person or two. Start there. I'm pulling up the hearing calendar. Just give me one minute. Okay, in. Judiciary. Ten ninety-seven is second to last. So that'll be, and that's, and that's gonna be a long day. So that will be pretty late. And then in revenue.
What day is it?
Thursday.
In revenue, Clement's bill is last and that could be.
Oh, wow.
So those two, those two can absolutely end up in conflict with one another.
Yes, they could.
Or, I mean, it's interesting, because they're both late and they're both committees with fairly long hearing days that day. Those two could be on top of each other. They could be hours apart depending on how the testimony on those days goes. I think we need to assume that it's two different commissioners.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna excuse myself, but I'm willing to do whatever. I can fill either one. Sounds like both is a bad idea.
Or I should do, or I could do none. I'm okay with none as well. So Commissioner Vest gets one.
I also could be available. I want some support, some help with testimony potentially.
I would be, I would be available on Thursday also, possibly, yeah.
Commissioner Schulte, are you available? I mean, we're not gonna send you to the one that you opposed. I get it.
Thursday evening, not a good time for me, actually. I have another.
Okay, okay. So who wants it then? Who wants what?
Well, I do have, gosh, if it's the last one, I do have a six o'clock appointment on Thursday.
You're gonna end up, it's gonna be tight.
Okay, then I'm not, then I'm not gonna do it.
Commissioner Yocum, are you, are you okay taking the, the judiciary committee?
Yes, that would be my preference.
Yeah, okay. So we'll send Commissioner Vest to revenue to represent us and Commissioner Yocum to judiciary. Look at testimony for both. Okay. The last thing that I have, and I've spoken with Commissioner Vest about this already, actually spoken with each of you about it, but Commissioner Yocum, I don't think you've seen this language.
No, I've not seen it. We spoke on the phone.
Yeah. So obviously, the revenue committee is looking at big property tax reform and I think that's incredibly needed in our state. I'm very, actually very thankful that we are addressing these issues. But I do think it has to be done with, with, you know, the idea that we, we want local government to still be successful. There is language in front of each of you and the clerk has it too. We can, I don't know if we want to put it up on the screen or, would you just throw that up on the screen? No way we're not. This is a letter that is before the City of Lincoln, Lancaster County, the City of Omaha, Douglas County, United Cities of Sarpy and Sarpy County at the moment. I have a call later today to talk, scheduled to talk with the Sarpy County Board Chair about this. My understanding is that the City of Lincoln has already signed off on this, on this language and that the Douglas County Board is actually signing off on it as we speak this morning, is my understanding. I haven't received confirmation of that, but that's, that's my understanding is that they had looked at it and were planning on signing off on it this morning. It's, it's an open letter to the revenue committee and to the governor effectively saying, well, I'll just read it. I'll just read it. But the subject is Nebraska's largest cities and counties urge support for public safety, community growth, and CPI. The largest cities and counties in Nebraska urge Governor Pillen and the revenue committee to prioritize public safety, community growth, and increases in the Consumer Price Index in any tax reform package that is negotiated this year. The goal of reducing property taxes is supported by Nebraskans in urban and rural areas alike, but any reduction in public safety services would be detrimental to the entire state. We are deeply appreciative of the good work being done already to include provisions related to exemptions during emergency declarations as declared by the governor, bonded indebtedness and tax increment financing. These demonstrate true good faith in negotiations and are crucial to our communities. The current proposals pending before the legislature currently do not include exemptions for public safety services and that is critical for any legislation to move forward with support from Nebraska's largest communities. The largest cities and counties are also focused on growing vibrant communities and hard caps that do not count, count for this population economic growth and increase in the CPI would be contrary to the goals of our state. Before the revenue committee forwards any proposal to the legislative floor, our cities and counties need exceptions for public safety, growth, and CPI calculations to be at the forefront of the negotiations and discussions. This will ensure our state continues to be one of the safest and best places to raise a family. I really think it would be smart to join the other large communities in, in this kind of language. And I think something like this needs to be put at kind of the front of the conversation, just so that, just, just so that our positions are clear. So anyways, I would, I would, I guess I would entertain a motion that Lancaster County sign on to this language and that we support efforts to secure exceptions for public safety services, growth, and a CPI increase.
I absolutely would do that. Move that we support this letter because I'll tell you what, a hard cap on anything like this would be very, very difficult. It'd be unsustainable.
Right, yeah. I would second that move by motion.
Are you aware, is anybody aware, like where the other communities sit on this? Are they actually doing it or?
Yeah, I've been told Sarpy Cities is doing it. I've been told the City of Lincoln is doing it. I believe I will hear this morning that Douglas County is, is doing this as well. well, and then the City of Omaha is looking at it right now. That's the only one that I have not positively heard is, like, and just, I've just heard that the City of Omaha is reviewing it, I haven't heard, like, yep, they're good.
So, I just, I guess I want to make sure I understand, because this is pointing out, it appears to be adding three things, public safety, community growth, and the CIP, CPI.
Yeah, I think it's making sure, sure that exemptions for those three things are, are in the package and are part of the conversation. And right now, it's just, I mean, you go to, you've, you've all heard me on this, you get onto the Capitol and everyone has heard seven rumors about what's in the property tax package, and everyone has, has the inside scoop on what it is, and every version is very different than the last one you heard about. So I think this is just the largest communities in Nebraska making their positions clear that we prioritize these things. A lot of, a lot of what I've heard about and haven't seen final versions, but a lot of what I've heard about includes these things, or includes parts of these things. We're making it clear that we want all three of these things in here if we're to entertain a package that has any kind of hard cap or any kind of lid on, you know, on property tax, total property tax collections.
I guess part of my question then is, and then there's three other things that are listed, emergency declarations, bondedness, tax increment financing, how sure are we that those are part of the conversation?
Imperatively pretty sure.
Right.
I would agree that we don't want to lose any of those, I mean, I'll be honest, tax increment financing matters less to Lancaster County than the others. But I think, but I think the, the other communities that we're signing on with that matters, I definitely think we want bonded indebtedness, an exemption for bonded indebtedness, and an exemption for emergency declarations. It has been, it, it seems to be the general understanding that those things are, are okay in the package and that different, the other three are what people are kind of going back and forth on.
Community growth and CPI definitely make a lot of sense to me. I don't, I guess I don't know exactly how, what all could be classified as public safety, because you could do a lot in the mind of.
For our, so, so the, the active, let me just pull it up here. The active definition for public safety services that keeps being used in these talks, and I can find it here for you.
It's a good question, because our, our road's part of public safety, because.
They're not, they're not based on the definition that has been being used. Thirteen.
Or water, or.
Yeah, it's thirteen dash three twenty is the definition, let me pull this up and I'll read it to everybody. I don't think anyone is trying to sneak in any, any expansive definitions. Public safety services as defined for the purposes of sections three thirteen, sorry, thirteen, three eighteen, to thirteen, three twenty-six, public safety services means crime prevention, offender detention, firefighter, police, medical, ambulance, and other emergency services, so.
That's pretty, that's pretty narrow then.
Yeah, for us, for us, it would be, it would be Sheriff's Office and, and corrections. And I just think, I think, you know, it's, it's, it's one of the, the critical foundational duties of government is public safety, and I just don't think we can, we can't risk it, right? So, we have a motion in a second on this, is there any further discussion to support this language? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
If it's okay by the board, then I will, I, just as Chair, I'll sign off on this letter, is that?
Yeah, go for it.
Let me see, head nods from everybody. The attorneys are okay with that? Okay?
Just add that I did go yesterday to testify on behalf of ten ninety, Senator Ballard's bill for radio funding for rural fire departments, and there are two others that came on, Senator Dober has a bill and Senator Brewer has a bill, and they ended up packaging them and ended up being, we had the benefit of getting to hear several department budget hearings before that those bills came up for testimony, but it was an impressive display of unity across the state as members of volunteer fire departments from across Nebraska were there to testify on the challenges they face with a lack of communication due to the current radios that they're using and the cost of replacing them. Really great testimony from some folks who said we provide five hundred million dollars of service for public safety, and here we are asking you to support that by providing us with ra, uh, radios. Also, the Sheriff of Buffalo County from Kearney provided really powerful testimony about the need to be able to coordinate with rural fire departments on situations that they're involved in, so overwhelming display of support, and it only took four hours of my life to talk for two and a half minutes, thank you.
That's the way that goes.
Thank you, Dave, that, I, I just thought.
Welcome to the Nebraska Legislature.
The testimony that was provided, which made me sound a lot smarter than I actually am, was excellent and right on spot and supported the rest of the testimony that was there. It, it was clear that the message is widespread.
Yeah, we had, we had representatives, Commissioner Vest did an excellent job, I was able to watch the hearing, and then we had representatives from the Malcolm and Firth Fire Departments, and they did really, a really nice job, both of them, and I think our, our, our position was made, was made pretty plain, plain to the, the committee, I thought it was good, so.
Senator Ballard did a nice job introducing it to.
Yes, he did.
Give him credit.
Yeah, he's been a real ally, so, okay. Do you have anything else for the legislative update? That was actually a lot for it, Thursday. Okay, we can move on to public comment.
I admit it's public comment, those wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
And just real quickly, I know some of you here are here to discuss valuations, I recommend coming on the public comment for Board of Equalization, which will immediately follow this, it's just more pertinent.
Good morning, my name is Penny Stevens, I'm from here in Lincoln, and I'm gonna speak on election integrity. Oh, I will correct that, because there is no such thing as election integrity, so I'm here to speak for we, the people. I want to talk about a little bit of the timeline of our election laws, and, and, first of all, in nineteen ninety-three, Bill Clinton signed into law the National Voter Registration Act, which centralized the DMV across the country. And then I also want to make note that also in nineteen ninety-three Chuck Hagel was CEO of the American Information System, today known as ESNS. Mr. Hagel held his connection to ESNS through two thousand and two, he was required to disclose this to the, the FEC, but he did not, and during an ethics hearing, Senator Hagel still owned beneficial interest in ESNS, and during this time, ESNS counted approximately sixty percent of all ballots across our country. Hagel omitted various information to his connections, and that's hiding truth, and that's no transparency. Since Hagel's connection to ESNS, twenty-four major overhauls have been made to our fifteen-hundred election statutes. Over half of these major overhauls occurred while Mr. Hagel remained in high office in our government, including adding federal law in two thousand and two, the Help Americans Vote Act. So. Our elections are fraudulent, and I want to just bring up the first one, because it basically reconstructed all our laws here in Nebraska on how to vote. So this is it right here, and I'd like to know how many Nebraskans knew that this was being removed. And right here is page two, be it enacted by the people of the state of Nebraska, I was never notified. So let's go back to our election laws that are not constitutional, because these laws were made while Chuck Hagel was connected to our voting machine through ESNS. So, let's break that down a little bit here. Nebraska election laws here, Hagel was CEO of the American Information Systems from ninety-four through ninety-seven, and as you'll see there, it overlaps when, because, when he was Senator. And then, as Senator, all these election laws were made and amended and put machines into place. Here in two thousand and ten, Hagel was then Obama's Intelligent Advisory Board, and then he became the, the Secretary of Defense. He had access to all our voting systems throughout his career in our government. So let's go here to the NVRA, the National Voter Act. Chuck Hagel in ninety-three was there with the American Informations Act. In two thousand, we had the voting malfunction in Florida. In two thousand and one, Nebraska created a task force to overlook our elections, and then later that year, we had the attack on America. In two thousand and two, the Help America Vote Act came into play, and Hagel still testified to the Ethics Committee, he still had connections during that time. Those laws were being made, machines were being put in place. We were then, we went in and bombed Iraq, all these laws then were created. Two thousand and eighteen, polling books were digitalized, our signatures were digitalized, Bennett brought in all new machines. Twenty twenty, in January, drop boxes were put in place, a law to put them in place before COVID was even a pandemic, how did we know we needed drop boxes? Hmm. Voter photo ID the people voted for, but we got voter ID, it's not what the people wanted. And then, in two thousand and twenty-three, we gave more power to ESNS, who is a corporation, this is not we, the people. Thank you.
That is your five minutes. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on items not on the agenda today?
You want me to sign in again?
Yeah, please.
I have to second Patriot Penny's comments this morning. Thank you for your diligence. We haven't had honest elections really since we stopped the hand count. I voted in a lot of elections in which we got it right the very first time. Went to the nursing home and filled out a paper ballot, and usually by eleven-thirty, midnight, we all knew exactly who won it and who didn't. It was accurate, nobody had to question anything. Then we bring in these machines. Not very smart, but you can tell a machine to do anything that you want. Children, obey your parents and the Lord, for this is right. Honor thy father and mother, which is the first commandment of promise, that it may be well with thee, and thou mayest live long on the earth. And ye fathers, provoke not your children to wrath, but bring them up in the nurture and admonition of the Lord. Servants, be obedient to them that are your masters according to the flesh, with fear and trembling, and singlest of your heart as unto Christ. Not with thy service, as men pleasers, but as servants of Christ, the will, doing the will of God from the heart, with goodwill during service, as to the Lord and not to men. Knowing that whatsoever good thing any man doeth, the same shall he receive of the Lord, whether he be bond or free. And ye masters, do the same things unto them, forbearing threatening, knowing that your master also is in heaven. Neither is their respective persons with him. Finally, my brethren, be strong in the Lord and in the power of his might. Put on the whole armor of God, that you may be able to stand against the wiles of the devil. For we rouse not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness from on high. Wherefore, take unto you the whole armor of God, that you may be able to withstand in the evil day, and having done all, stand. Stand therefore, having your loins girt about with truth, and having on the breastplate of righteousness, and your feet shod with the preparation of the gospel of peace. Above all, taking the shield of believing, wherewith you may be able to quench all the fiery darts of the wicked, and take the helmet of salvation and the sword of the Spirit, which is the word of God. Praying always with all prayer and supplication in the Spirit, and watching therein too with all perseverance and supplication for all saints. And for me, that utterance may be given unto me, that I may open my mouth boldly to make known the mystery of the gospel, for which I'm an ambassador in bonds, that therein I may be, I may speak boldly as I ought to speak. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak on items not on the agenda? Okay. We can proceed to announcements.
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a mid-year budget meeting on Thursday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, at eight thirty AM in room one twelve of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at nine AM in room one twelve of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at four zero two, four four one, seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster NE dot G O V. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on L N K TV. L N K TV is available on allo channel two and spectrum channel thirteen hundred. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE dot G O V. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L N K TV apps are also available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV.
Move we adjourn.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte? Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
We are adjourned, yes. Okay, I'm gonna have us take a six-minute break, we'll come back here at ten fifty, then we'll do Board of Equalization. then we'll do Board of Equalization.
I move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next item is five, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county Board of Equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on Board of Equalization, Board of Equalization business not on the agenda? Please sign in, state your name, and everyone who wishes to speak will have five minutes.
Commissioners, my name's Frank Habercamp. I'm the owner of the Havelock Manor, sixty-three-thirty Platt Avenue. I'm in Commissioner Vest's territory. I'm here to talk about the assessment for two thousand and twenty-three going forward. I was previously assessed at seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. It was increased three hundred and thirty-one percent to two million, four hundred and thirty thousand. They changed the method of calculation and is now based on the net profit of my business. I don't agree with that method of calculation, but my appeal was not to argue the method of calculation, but the numbers they used. None of the numbers used to determine my gross, my net, were anywhere near correct. They were taken out of a book. There were assumptions based on labor, other expenses. Everybody knows that medical expenses, labor is way up. My payroll is up sixty percent since COVID. So in my appeal last summer, I appealed, and I sent my actual tax returns for the two previous years. I had a phone hearing with the hearing officer, and we walked through my tax returns, and he told me that, yes, I was using the right things for my tax return to determine what they would consider to be net profit. Based on that, and again, I don't agree with the calculation and the method they're using, but using their own formula, I would have increased from seven hundred and thirty-four thousand to about a million dollars. They have me at two-point-four-three million. They didn't move it a penny. My appeal was denied. I've now filed a Turk appeal. That's probably gonna cost me ten thousand dollars. I have to get an appraisal, have to spend the time. It's gonna cost the county a ton of time in man-hours. I'm gonna win. I know that. I'm gonna get it reduced to what it really should be. What I don't understand is, why are we wasting all this time when I provided my actual tax returns? That's my comment. I would answer any questions.
In public comment, we're not really supposed to, it's not supposed to be a dialogue in public comment. Public hearings are a little bit different where the county board is more free to ask questions. But that said, I would, I would encourage you to stick around the meeting afterwards, because I suspect there are commissioners who would like to have one-on-one conversations.
Well, the last thing I'd like to also add is, their current assessment has me at three hundred and twenty-four dollars a foot for a sixty-year-old, one-story, seventy-five-hundred-square-foot wood frame building up against the back of the yards. It's crazy, but I'm gonna have to spend a lot of money. The other problem, as I understand the system, in a couple of months, I'm gonna have to start paying those taxes. I'll pay the first half in twenty-four. So instead of eight thousand, I'm gonna have to spend twenty-two or twenty-three thousand. Then I'll have to do it again at the first of August. The appeal is probably gonna take two years, something like that. It's my understanding, I won't get a refund when I win. It will get credit to, to my future taxes. And as I understand it, if the assessor raises me to two-point-five million this year, I'll have to file another appeal and go through this whole process, because the new assessment doesn't take into account any reduction I would get in my Turk appeal. And so I just have to keep rolling through this. Everybody should pay property taxes. I agree with you, Commissioner Flowerday, that property taxes are a huge problem in this state. But everybody should pay. I'm only asking to pay a fair amount. Now, another problem, if the assessor's going to use that formula, then the county owes me money for this year. We're overbuilt in the assisted living bed arena for the moment. The big players, Dial, Emmanuel, people like that, they're preparing. The oldest baby boomer is seventy-eight years old this year. In about five more years is when statistically people start needing assisted living, and they're getting ready for that tsunami that's coming, okay? Little guys like me, I'm twenty-five Bets. Little guys like me, you know, we don't have the pocket they've got. So right now, occupancy is a problem for everybody. We're all kind of fighting for the same smaller group. They can afford to wait it out. My occupancy was down for a number of reasons in two thousand and twenty-three. I lost money. So if we're gonna charge me property taxes based on my profit, do I get a refund if I lose money? Well, of course not, and I'm not asking for one. But it's crazy to, to charge property taxes based on my profit because it goes up and down from year to year. So I object to using profit as a method, but if we're gonna use that as the method, then at least use my real numbers to, to charge me taxes.
Right, right.
Thank you.
That is your five minutes. Thank you. And like I said, I would encourage you to stick around.
Hello, my name's Monty Frelick. I, I own Pemberley Place, which is a local senior living community on Nebraska Parkway. I'm not here to complain about property taxes. I, I know that government needs to, needs to charge taxes. I, I'm not even here to complain about increase in property taxes, because I know that property taxes go up, and they usually go up very fairly consistently. But I've been building and leasing commercial and residential space in Lincoln for over thirty years. And we built Pemberley Place and opened in two thousand and eighteen, hundred-and-twenty units. If I could show this. It's really, you know, this country got started because some people, in part, were upset about taxes on tea. And, you know, that was a government that picked on tea drinkers. This is a government that's picking on seniors, and that's where I really get fired up. You know, my mother's in a senior living community, not this one, in a different community. She's ninety-five. Our residents are about mid-eighties. That's the average. They're not here. They can't, they really don't, they're supposed to be enjoying the last years of their lives. And, you know, as a generation, they probably served more than anybody in our community, and yet this is what we're doing to them. And it really, really bothers me, because ultimately, everybody, commercial or residential, it's the users, it's the residents who pay taxes. And so, you know, this, this is an assault on seniors. And Lincoln talks a lot about affordable housing, and, and then this is what they do. So it's not right. I'm just showing you what happened in this particular case. We, we didn't protest probably eighty percent of the values. You know, we know that setting values is not easy, but so, but a few of them are, are just off, and this one's way off. And in thirty years, I've never seen anything like this. I just, just to make it easy to follow, I numbered kind of the history here. Number one, two thousand and twenty-two, the assessed value was six-point-eight million. In January two thousand and twenty-three, the assessed value went up to thirty-four million, which is a twenty-seven-million-dollar increase, five-hundred-and-five percent. And then again, this last year, it went up one percent. Okay, that is reasonable, but that jump, translated, means that we would have to charge every one of the hundred-and-twenty-unit residents three-hundred-and-eleven dollars a month more just to cover the increase. And I think that's wrong. So that's why I'm here today. I would appreciate it if y'all would do what you can to make this right. Thank you.
Just echo Commissioner Flowerday's comments that if you have a few minutes, we wanna give everybody their time, and then we'll wrap up shortly after that.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Yeah, I can stay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Lang with M J Senior Living on behalf of Fallbrook assisted living, sixty-six-hundred Juliet Court. Echo what's been said already with the valuations. Our businesses didn't change from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. In fact, expenses only got higher. So if anything, while we, we may have had a time period where our valuations potentially were under the true value, this is not a three or four hundred or five hundred percent increase that we've been off. According to the Department of Revenue, Lancaster County averaged sixteen percent in commercial property for increases in two thousand and twenty-three. We are commercial property. We are, we are an asset class that, plain and simple, got picked on in the twenty-three valuation time period. It wasn't like the, the county averaged sixteen, and we got twenty or twenty-five percent. The county averaged sixteen, and we got three, four, five hundred percent. We got triple-digit increases. To Monty's point, at Fallbrook, it's a little over two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars per apartment. To Monty's point, at Fallbrook, it's a little over two hundred and eighteen dollars per apartment would be the pass-along cost to the residents. To date, we have not done that to them. We, we don't want to do that to them. What we want is we want some help. We want some assistance. There's a bad formula being used by the assessor's department. We all told them about it last year. When we went through our referee hearings, did the same thing, brought in actual financials, went over it with the actual referee, thought, man, there's hope here. These people were nice on the phone. This, this is going to help. We shared all the data that nobody wants to share. And then we come back and we see our valuation and it didn't change. So quickly, you can get on the assessor's site and you can see everybody else's valuations. We start pulling up all the other senior housing providers, this asset class that takes care of the most frail population in Lancaster County. Pull up everybody's valuation, nobody got a change. I don't know how they can be that right. When they have all these people providing data that says your formula is wrong. You've got a bad formula in here. Your expense ratios, you, you're, you're using five, six-year-old data on what our expenses look like. Post-COVID, our expenses have skyrocketed. It's just the way it is. There needs to be adjustment. So we had hoped, coming into two thousand and twenty-four, that they had worked on their formula. They haven't. We got our initial valuations for two thousand and twenty-four. They're either unchanged or in Monty's case, it's gone up a little bit. I don't know why they don't like Monty. I mean, here the guy's selling a building to the county, had a great deal. And, and his valuation goes up a little higher. We're sitting with our valuation at Fallbrook, same. They, we provided all this feedback, no change. We need your help to make change. Most of us are sitting in the Turk process. My understanding is there, there is the ability to pull us out of the Turk process and settle. The county attorney and the assessor can get together and come up with a settlement and they can do industry-wide. They can say, hey, you know what? Sixteen percent was the average. We know our formula's wrong. Let's hit them all with the average for two thousand and twenty-three and let's go to, go to bat on working on our formula. And then hit us with another sixteen percent in twenty-four. You know, now we're up to thirty-two percent over a couple of years. I, I, I don't think you're going to hear a huge argument from us because it sounds reasonable. In the past, we were used to seeing one, two, maybe a five percent increase would be a big increase. And so when I see the, the commercial values went up sixteen percent in Lancaster County, I said, okay, well, maybe we have to be more realistic in what type of increase we'd be able to accept. Because again, we've, we've supplied our, our net operating income information and it didn't matter. But there is an ability, you have the ability. You have the ability to go down to the assessor's office and talk and ask them questions about what's happening with these formulas. Where have you done, what have you worked on? How are we going to provide these people that are serving our most frail population some relief immediately? Because we have to get that relief. We're going to have to make these tax payments. These tax payments for us are going to come out of capital improvement money. What does that mean? That means we won't have those funds on hand to replace the carpet, to make upgrades that our residents, the seniors of Lancaster County deserve. The county assessor has taken that ability away from us at this point in time by these egregious increases. Again, you have the ability. Talk to the county assessor, talk to the county attorney, propose something that is workable, where they can pull us out of the Turk, we can stop the attorney's fees, we can stop, stop the appraisals fees. We'll come in, we'll sign off, we'll settle. We'll get that credit, hopefully. Hopefully this happens before we have to pay our next bill because as was mentioned earlier, it's not a, here's a check back. That money's gone once it's out. We have to figure out a way to survive until we get the credit. Thank you for your time.
Virgil Carner with Orchard Park Assisted Living. And the two gentlemen before have stated the case very accurately. And I was blown away when the evaluations came last fall. I came to the protest and, but did not make the official request. But our evaluation went from about two and a half million to over five million, which was about a three hundred and five percent increase realized in the property tax that is due. Our situation, and our administrator will talk after me, that we don't have the ability to increase the rates because we serve primarily Medicaid residents. And she'll give you an, an exact figure. But the tax for this year is eighty-eight thousand two forty-one forty. And for last year, it was thirty-one thousand six oh five ninety-six. We can't absorb that. So we're asking for some sort of adjustment and direction to the assessor's office so that we'll be able to survive. My conclusion, and I haven't done the work that these gentlemen have, haven't submitted income, et cetera. We're, we've essentially operated over the thirty-five years as a nonprofit, but we're for-profit. My conclusion is to go to a nonprofit status and not have to deal with the property tax. In the past, the thirty-one thousand, we could figure in, but eighty-eight thousand, just not in the books. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to us. My name is Galen Bradley and I am the administrator of Orchard Park. And I just wanted to add that we are a community that has forty-nine residents in it. Virgil owns it. He built it, he's ran it up until I came two years ago. And we, of those forty-nine residents, thirty-five of them guys are Medicaid waiver. We lose money by having Medicaid waiver in there. We don't make money. We do it to be a blessing to these people that need a place to go. And we, as these other gentlemen have said, everything has gone up because of COVID. Wages, food, utilities, you name it, it's gone up. And we cannot afford, we don't have this extra money in the budget to pay these taxes. We just don't have it. And if we, we are one of the largest assisted living communities in Lincoln, in which there's only about three. One of them, the Victorian Clothes that took Medicaid waiver. There aren't communities out there that can afford to even take these people in. So if we were to close, I have no idea where these thirty-five people out of forty-nine would even go. There's no place for them to go. So we really need the help from whoever can get it to us. And it's not just to us, it's to everybody. You know, there's, there's, there's a huge need for people to be taken care of that are on Medicaid waiver. My phone does not quit ringing. We are never not full because I have a huge, long line of people who are begging me daily and I am not making that up, I am not exaggerating that. My phone has done nothing but blow up since I've been sitting here with people that need to be in our community because we're able to take them in. We don't have the luxury to raise rent. We can't raise the people that are there that are on Medicaid waiver and the other people that are there don't have a lot of money themselves. So we don't even have that as an option. So I am really asking you guys to do what you can to understand that there is a huge need to rectify what's going on and to give these people that do not have the money that the state is trying to help, a place to live. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
My name's Jay Harnish, G P of Finance with Nye Health Services. We operate the skilled and assisted living facility at fifty-second No Gateway Vista. I'm here to just voice support for everyone else that has spoken. They've all said it very, very well. My notes say all the same things that they were going to do, so I just want to voice support for that. I know every year stands alone when it comes to valuations and I reiterate that the formula and the variables within that formula, there are bits and pieces of that that are flawed and we're all having to individually fight this battle when collectively there is something that needs to be done to correct it. So I support all of their comments and say that there is a collective piece of this formula that needs to be fixed so that this year and future years can stand alone and be okay. But as they said, two thousand and twenty-four is still off and we have a continuing fight every year and that's why the formula needs to get corrected. So I support and my hope is that you guys can do something to correct that and allow us to collectively fix this versus individually fighting it. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? No one else? Seeing none, real quick, I just want to make two general comments. Number one, I would encourage everybody here, and I think a lot of you are already aware of it, but Lancaster County's pri, one of their top priority bills here at the legislature is L D twelve seventeen, which will provide a, a property tax exemption based on the percentage of occupied Medicaid beneficiary beds provided. So that could possibly provide some. I would also just generally encourage anyone, I've heard, I hear people say sometimes, oh, don't bother going before the county board, they don't ever overturn anything, they never change anything. That's right, oftentimes we don't. If, if there's an increase of twenty-five percent, well, that might be the market rate and that's not a comfortable conversation with a lot of people. In the case of triple-digit rate increases, come talk to us, please, really, like truly, come talk to us. I don't think there's a commissioner up here that is comfortable with triple-digit increases. So I just, that's a general statement and I would say that goes for every industry and every person in Lancaster County, so.
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn in a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.